Everybody here back there in the back?
Yep.
Rodney, first of all, I would like to really express my gratitude for everybody showing up. Myself and Linda Ovar from the Chamber, along with Marcus today has had a very, very busy day. We've had the city engineer with us and we've toured the manufacturing plants. We've been in the adjacent communities, looked around to see what all of the offer around us. Marcus has spent a great deal of his time today visiting with the manufacturing people and also trying to gather a sense of Horton's history and what the potential is maybe for future, the future for Horton. We're gonna turn this into a town hall meeting eventually. We gotta conduct it as a special meeting for the city government so we can all be here. One thing I would like to interrate to you guys is we're not gonna turn this into a, we really don't wanna turn it into a negative map. So Marcus is going to maybe be critical to us at times about our community, be positive at other times, just respect his comments, respect him for being able to come to our community at such a short notice with a hugely busy schedule that the gentleman has. We found out the day his phone blows up every five to 10 seconds, I think. So the man is very busy, but he's also given us his undivided attention for the community and today to look at our businesses in our downtown. So with that, I would like to also reiterate to the community and the public, this event, Marcus and I actually started this event by a social media text. From there, it led to more productive phone call. But actually, for me and the community, this event could never have been pulled off without USD 430's staff. Lizzie Kreider, I don't worship that, I can't see her. Kristy Wood. Lizzie's class and some out of Kristy's class, I think, was very instrumental in making this happen. A lot of hard work went into play, a lot of communication. And as you can see, the poster boards that are on the stage tonight, as well as the flyers that was distributed to the businesses, were done all by Mrs. Kreider and Mrs. Wood. So again, I can't thank them enough. We don't even have any idea what the potential is because I don't think the potential's even been tapped. So with that being said, I'll turn this over to Lizzie Kreider, who has some introductions to make.
Okay, so I am Mrs. Kreider and on behalf of the students and staff at USD 430, I'd like to thank everyone for coming and how much we are thankful for Mr. Lamontis coming today. My career in Community Connections class has been busy promoting and preparing for this event. So we have created a very fun and silly presentation to get the meeting started. So I'm gonna turn it over to Haley and Amber.
Feel free to laugh if you want. Revitalized by definition means something new with life and vitality. Our town has been lacking that key component and into the door walks Marcus Lamontis. Who is that? One might ask, we'll be sure to tell you, but try not to gasp. Let's start with the riddle, here we go. What's better than two great things? Oh, I know the answer to that one. What's better than two great things is putting two great things together and making them one. In 2010, Lamontis did this, the man saw an opportunity and he took the risk. He put Good Sam Enterprises and Camping World together. Consolidating the two to make them better than ever. Now it's time for the second riddle, if you answer correctly, I'll give you a McRiddle. What TV show features the man searching for businesses who need a hand? He puts his own money on the line just to save their business? But don't you worry, he makes a little profit. Oh, I got it, I got it. It's The Profit starring Lamontis that airs weekly on CNBC. Bingo, now it's time to wrap up the show. Let the man take over that might even be a little more entertaining than us. Marcus Lamontis. What, what, Marcus Lamontis? What, what, Mark?
We're gonna thank you for coming and helping our community and we also wanna thank the area businesses for contributing to this welcome basket that our class put together to show our community business support.
Thank you very much, Lizzie's class, and it couldn't have been done any better. With that being said, I'll go ahead and as a mayor, call the meeting to order. Go. I need to entertain a motion to go ahead and start the meeting in the discussion of revitalization of downtown Business District as well as the entire community of Horton.
Make up motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion on the table by Commissioner Edwards. Second by Commissioner Forkenbrock, all in favor? Motion carried.
Well, thanks very much for coming out tonight. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
In the back, it's okay? Ladies, thank you for putting that together. More importantly, the power of social media is, I think, changing the world more than ever. For Tim and I to meet over Facebook and for all of us to Twitter at 1:30 in the morning, it tells us a lot about change. And unfortunately, change is something that a lot of people don't like. A lot of people. Do you like change? Anybody here like change? Anybody here scared of change? You can't put your hand down for both. So the reality of it is, is that nobody likes change. I don't like change because it's the fear of the unknown. And the problem that I think all of us have is as we travel the country and I see hundreds of thousands of cities throughout the year, some are okay with change and some are not. And I guess the question is, is the town of Horton, the city of Horton, okay with change? Because change is happening right now in this town. But unfortunately, it doesn't look like it's the right kind of change. It really doesn't, I'll be honest. So about 20 years ago, maybe a little bit more than that, maybe 30 years ago, I used to spend my summers in a town called Youngstown, Ohio. It was a town made up of steel mills, right out, not far from Pittsburgh, not far from Campbell, and the entire economy was based on steel factories. And not far away were big GM plants. And I'd spend eight years old, nine years old, 10 years old, 12 years old, I'd spend my summers there. And every year, as a child, I noticed it getting worse. And I'd go back and I'd notice houses empty and storefronts empty and people unemployed and then McDonald's closed. And I would ask, what's going on here? Well, the plant closed and people are unemployed and things are really, really bad. And if you go back there today like I did a year ago, you drive down what used to be a vibrant city with bars and restaurants and flower shops and dry cleaners and everything you could think of. And today, what's it look like? It's a question. What does it look like? What's it look like?
A ghost town.
A ghost town. Looks like a ghost town. If I drove into Horton, I didn't know any of you today, and I passed Tim's gas station, what would I see after I passed the gas station? Nothing. Nothing. So what I worry about is, in order for something to change, it isn't someone like me coming to town and spending an afternoon or even coming back 25 more times and spending 25 days. One person can't make that difference. So what you guys have to decide until we even move forward tonight is, is the town willing to be different? Is the town willing to recognize that they're in a very, very bad place right now? And there are a few businesses, and I met them today, that are providing jobs, about 120 jobs, but there's 1,700 people here. And I don't know where the 1,700 jobs are. They're not in this town. We drove by the casino and the parking lot was jam-packed. We drove by another casino and the parking lot was jam-packed. And then I asked how those people get to the casino and how do they drive through our town? Problem is, they're not stopping. Maybe they're stopping for gas and some Fritos, but they're not stopping to do business with us. And so the history of Horton is a lot longer than the last couple of years, the last 10 years, the last 20 years, the last 30 years. I walked into Tim's station today and the first thing I saw, and I now know it was over the ice cream machine, was a little painting of Horton in 1920. Vibrant, cars parked everywhere, big mobile signs, storefronts open. And then you look at all the black and white pictures and there was people everywhere, trading dollars, buying things, socializing, doing all these things. What changed?
Mobility.
Mobility?
People driving, St. Joe, by, sir.
People left. Well, what happened from 1920 to now? Railroad went away. So I'm gonna tell you a very personal story. When I was a young boy, I was very heavy. And I weighed probably 225 pounds in eighth grade. And when I started the ninth grade, I weighed 160. Over the summer, I lost all that weight. And the reason I lost it is because I wanted to reinvent myself. Because kids didn't like me, I was fat, so I developed an eating disorder. And I'd stick my finger in my mouth and I'd throw up and I'd put a garbage bag and I'd go run for miles and I'd collapse. And I was destined to reinvent myself because I figured that the only way that I was gonna be able to be successful, which wasn't necessarily right, is that I had to reinvent myself. I had to be somebody different. Somebody that I really wasn't, but I had to be somebody different. So I went to high school and I got a little better. I was still awkward, couldn't get a date, I wasn't heavy, I played athletics, went to an all-boys high school. And then I decided that I wasn't, I didn't reinvent myself the way I really wanted to. So I said to my parents, I grew up in Miami, Florida, sunshine, South Beach, everybody's happy, except me. And I decided that I wanted to go as far away as I could, so I said to my mom, "I wanna go to Milwaukee, Wisconsin for college." Okay? "When do you wanna go see the school?" "Let's go in January." So we leave Miami at 75 degrees, we get to Milwaukee, it's not 75 degrees. And she looks at me and she says, "What are you doing? What is this about?" And I said, "Here's my theory. I know I'm gonna be the only dummy from Miami to come to Milwaukee. I'll be the only kid from Florida. I'm fit, I'm tan, nobody knows who I am, now I can be the cool kid from Florida." And so the reason I tell you that story is, I reinvented myself again. And I went to a place that nobody knew me, I didn't have any insecurities because they didn't know what I really was like, and I could start over. And I was a bartender and I had a great time. And I thought, "Well, this doesn't seem to be working either." So I left Milwaukee and moved back to Miami and I decided to run for office. I was 20 years old and I decided to run for Congress. And people looked at me like, "What? You absolutely know nothing about this." So I'd go to these debates and a two, three-term incumbent was there and the district that I was running for had like 2 million people in it. And I was 20 years old and I figured I could wing it. And they'd say to the incumbent, "Can you tell me a little bit about your position on education?" He'd go into this long story about how he stood for this and that, they'd ask me, I said, "Well, I'm for education, who's not? I mean, I want everybody to be educated, who's not?" The point of that story was, it was another attempt at me to reinvent myself. And over the course of my life, I've reinvented myself a number of times and I'm sure I'll do it again. So the question I have for Horton is, how are you reinventing yourself? Are you just gonna be the town that the railroad left? Are you? Anybody want an answer? Are you just gonna be the town that the railroad left?
Why don't you be the town that brings back the railroad?
Okay, well, I don't know how possible that's gonna be. But the challenge that all of you have, the 1,700 of you have, is it doesn't really matter what you look like today. It doesn't matter if people like you today. It doesn't matter if you're fat or you're ugly or all the things that I was, or poor or whatever it is. You do have a chance to reinvent yourself. You just have to be realistic about what you're gonna invent, reinvent yourself. I wanted to come back as Peyton Manning? Didn't work out. So as I drove from town today, I asked probably 350,000 questions. And my questions are always trying to understand how we got here, not necessarily where we're going. How did we get to where we are today? And you drive up and down Main Street and I asked a number of questions, and here are some of the questions that I asked. What is the number one asset that the city of Horton has? What's the number one asset?
The lake.
The lake? Okay, well, I'll tell you the answer. I'll give you a hint. The number one asset that the city of Horton has is its people. That's number one. What's number two? The lake. I actually think it's downtown. I actually think it's Main Street. I think I beat Tim up in the car 20 times today about the lake. I think it was a terrible mistake. It's not a political meeting.
No.
It's a business meeting. It was a terrible mistake because it may have had the right intent and the outcome may have been a good one, but it wasn't right in terms of our priorities. See, I'm a big believer, and I always get in trouble when I say this, I believe in charity, I believe a lot in it, but I believe that charity starts at home. I really do believe that it starts at home, whether it's in the four walls of your house, it really should start in the community that you live in. It's nice to do things for other people in other neighborhoods, but you better get it right at home first. And so when we take $3.5 million and we dredge a lake and we don't own the land around it, it's a problem. When we drive down Main Street and we see storefront after storefront empty, it's a problem. When we know that there's towns that compete with us for other people's business and we get beat by a town that's full of antiques, I don't know the name of the town, I can't remember.
Weston.
Weston? It's a problem. Now, I don't wanna say that we're better than Weston, but I'm gonna say, we're better than them. They can't be smarter than us. They can't have 1,000 people going through their neighborhood on a weekend to buy, you guys call them antiques, I call it used junk. But people drive for it, they love it. They love it. I love it. I look for stuff all the time, stuff that can decorate a store or decorate my house. But they came up with something different. And there are towns across the country that knew they had to reinvent themselves. So here are the five things that I would do. Number one, this town cannot survive on its own. It has to merge with other towns. It's a business decision, not a political one. But the surrounding towns have 200 citizens, 300 citizens, 500 citizens, and then there's a big town that has 5,000. So the first thing I would work on doing is figuring out how everybody can put their egos aside and how the small towns around us could become one larger town. Because much like in any business, you can't afford to have all these expenses all over the place when you can just do it in one place. You can't have double, triple city halls and three mayors and three police departments, you just can't have it all. Doesn't mean people are gonna be unemployed, it just means everybody's gotta be on the same team. Because you gotta give yourself a fighting chance. And so back in the day, there used to be big towns and then everybody wanted to annex themselves off because they wanted to be in charge of what happened in their neighborhood. They didn't like the tax rate over there, so the neighbors got together and signed a petition and they broke off. Well, it's time to come back together. And I don't know what those towns are, but I think we need to make a lot of noise about it. I can't remember the names of the towns, but Everest was one of them. We need to put, so that's number one. I would figure out how to consolidate towns. Because you need the tax base and the tax revenue from all the towns and all the taxpayers, including the people that are annexed around the lake, to be piling into the same pot. So that's number one. Number two, I would take a million dollars out of my Sydney coffers. In addition to that, I would look for businesses and state and other citizens and smart and wealthy people to rebuild Main Street. But I wouldn't just rebuild it by tuck-pointing bricks and putting a fresh coat of paint. I would create something very different. And I would take that picture that's in his station and I would try to turn Main Street back into something that is very historic, very memorable, and very Hollywood-like. So that the storefronts have a feel of the 1920s and 30s. And I have to tell you that it sounds expensive to some of you, but it's really not. It's just facades and different color paints and awnings and signs and things of that nature. But I would try to put time back and I would have the city buy those buildings. That's what I would do. Because it can't be that much money. And then I would take all of those storefronts and I would decide as the business owner, as the property owner, what businesses we're gonna go in there. And I would make it very, very unbelievably affordable for people to open up businesses. And I'd probably have, the different spaces have different things, so I'd probably put an art gallery where local artists can put their arts and crafts. I'd probably have another space where I can bring in organic produce from the area. I'd probably have a little bit of a collaborative kind of bake shop where people can bake different things and build a commercial kitchen where people can do that. I would come up with things that other people can use and to put people to work for themselves. For themselves. And I would try to fill every one of those storefronts, every single one of them, with businesses that are relevant so that I can create a destination and a reason for people to come. I'd probably take one of them and I'd put a bingo hall. Can't win any money. I'd probably take one of them and I'd put in an activity center. There's a lot of things that you can do. You guys will decide what your town needs, but whatever you do, it's gotta be reasons for people to get on a bus or get in their car and drive to this cute little town in the middle of Kansas that basically went back into the 1920s and there now is a reason to come here. I don't know what it would cost. My guess is it would cost more than a million dollars to buy the buildings and maybe another half a million to retrofit the front of them. And by the way, I wanna be clear, a million and a half dollars is a lot of money. You got more than double of that in your lake. More than double. And you have an obligation to pay for that money that you borrowed, right? And so you better figure out how to serve us to death. Because Detroit went bankrupt. And the reason it's not gonna go out of business is because General Motors and Ford and every other company that's in Detroit isn't gonna let it happen. There's jobs, there's real estate. But if a town like Horton, and I'm not saying your town, but any town like Horton goes bankrupt, what happens? They just print a new edition of the map and it's gone. And so you guys have a decision to make tonight, because tonight's really the start. You see, we have the ability to get a lot of attention for doing this. We have the ability to bring a lot of attention on the town of Horton because really, it's an experiment. It's an American experiment on saving the small town. So I spend my time and my money saving the small business. And it's hard. And it's painful. And it's expensive. And it's exhausting. And there's days where I think to myself, "I don't need this." And you guys are all gonna have that same feeling if you decide to put this town back together. How many people here are not working? You guys better get to work. We have to figure out how to get our priorities right. The third thing I would do is figure out if we're gonna invest in the lake, then you gotta invest in it. And the only way you can invest in that lake is to own the land around it. And maybe not own all of it, you gotta own some of it. Or at least have to annex it in. Because right now, you drive around the lake and I thought it was pretty. And then I drove by the ball field and it didn't look so good. I drove by the basketball court and it didn't look so good. But I'd sure love to have 10 courts out there where I could bring in youth leagues for weekend tournaments around Kansas. And I'd sure like to get our pool fixed. Anybody ever heard of crowdfunding? You've heard of it, sir?
Yep.
Anybody else? Raise your hand if you've heard of it. Okay. So I'll tell you a little bit about it for those of you that don't know. About five years ago, when the economy started to really crumble, and it crumbled hard and it crumbled fast, loans to small businesses essentially evaporated. And there was an arm of the United States government called the Small Business Administration, and it was created to loan money for small businesses. Well, I don't know, anybody in here have an SBA loan? It's not easy. Not an easy loan process. And you better have assets and you better have personal guarantees, it's not an easy process. And so when that started to evaporate because the government was trying to keep the country open, people came up with ideas and said, "Look, I don't wanna, I have this idea," or "I have this product," or "I have this invention, and I don't wanna go to New York City and meet with these sharks and give away 90% of my company. And I went to the SBA and they told me I needed collateral and I don't have any collateral." So this concept got created on the internet called crowdfunding. And you put your idea out on the internet and people can contribute, they use PayPal or they contribute through different mechanisms. And people have raised a lot of money. I met a guy who has a pizza place in Chicago who raised $50,000 to open up another location. And basically, it was just donations from people. And so the question is, is saving a town in America more or less important than the next great gadget? Or the next great idea? Is saving a town in this country important enough to get the attention of the media to not only fix this town, but other towns out there where people can make a contribution of whatever they can make, $5, $500, $5,000? And then what do you do with the money? So much like any business, if you're gonna launch a business idea or your business is in trouble, you gotta have a business plan. And you go to your banker and you say, "Here are my assets, here's my cash flow or my lack thereof, here's what I'm doing, here's what I wanna do," and the bank says thumbs up or thumbs down. Well, the same thing applies for crowdfunding. And it's time to figure out if this city wants to go out and use some of its own money, crowdfund, get local businesses, state businesses, or national businesses to help, or are just gonna sit here and do the same thing? So what's the answer? Because if we're gonna go forward and we're gonna try to reinvent ourselves and avoid the pain and suffering that goes along with not feeling good about yourself, you gotta not only do it for yourself, but for the kids and for the grandkids, for the history of the town. And look, it's easy to get excited tonight and leave here like this is some big pep rally, but there's a lot of work ahead. And there's gotta be a plan. And that everybody's gonna like the plan. Because I heard a story today about people arguing over what color to paint a wall. People either have to have faith in the process or the thing's gonna fail. So the question I have before we kinda move on is, where are you guys at in the process? Is it really possible? Or are we kidding ourselves that the town can be reinvented and that we can get on the national radar for having the town that's creating an experiment? It's a test, it's a prototype. Can the town be saved? Can the town be reinvented? What's the answer?
Hell yes!
The same guy that didn't like the lake. The same guy that didn't like the lake. So I don't know who all the building owners are along Main Street. But I think step one is, you gotta really get together with all the building owners and say, is Main Street really the number one priority for this town? Is merging with other towns the number one priority? Or are they parallel paths? Do they both need that? One's a little easier than the others. So my question to you is, is Main Street a priority, or did I miss something today? Be honest. Are there other priorities that I'm not thinking about?
Infrastructure.
Okay, talk about that. What does that mean?
The town's infrastructure is degraded. Obviously, there's a lot of apathy. There's been a sense of surrender. And so the infrastructure is just now becoming to get worked on, thank you, Timmy. Our sewers, our water systems, the very homes that we live in, we've allowed to degrade to the point that they need to be torn down. They're not worth saving. So the infrastructure, although it doesn't draw people to our area, will keep the foundation of the town together. After that, I agree with you, downtown is what we would use to entice folks to come here. But it's gotta be a different downtown than we show now. And it's gotta be from the outside of the city, which looks terrible, to the center of the city, which looks worse. Why would you want to come into that? Let's build it bigger, better. We've got the railroad turnstiles that we can rebuild. This is a historical, we moved here 10 years ago. We love this town. I'm not going anywhere. And if it takes my back or my ass or my sweat to build it, I'll build it. What do you need?
So, the infrastructure is broken. We talked about the sewer system today, right? The infrastructure is broken. Takes $5 million, plus or minus, to fix it? I don't think we have $5 million. Do we?
Phase one's done.
Phase one's done?
Phase two's coming in at the middle of this year. And then we move on to the collection system, which is either revitalize, revitalize the existing mechanical plant or go to the lagoon system. Phase one's already done.
Can we, can you grab some mics so everybody can hear? Do you mind just explaining? Let's just address the infrastructure issue real quick. I think these mics are live.
My name's Pat Cox. You probably all or a lot of you in the room know me. I'm a professional engineer. Been assisting your city in work related to infrastructure improvements for over 30 years. And Marcus's question was, he pointed at me, and obviously you all know we've been working on the collection system for the sanitary sewer in two phases. Just getting ready to start into phase two. The third phase comes in the rebuilding of the existing wastewater plant. The comment I made today with about $5 million is that's about what it will take to upgrade the existing wastewater treatment plant. So, did that answer your question, Marcus?
Yeah, it does. So to that infrastructure issue, I think the biggest challenge is you gotta do what you can afford to do, right? And we want to make sure that we don't get ourselves into any sort of trouble. And it's a little bit of a parallel path. We talk about bringing new businesses to town. It's going to be hard to bring your businesses to town until you clean it up. Can I address the outside versus the inside of town? You said the outer. You said that, when I drove here today and I saw the sign that said, "Welcome to Horton", I would have preferred, and we talked about this earlier, if the sign said, "Welcome to Horton, the city's that way", right? In whatever direction it needed to take me. And then I got to here and I found something really charming. So I actually would do the opposite of what you suggested, which is, I would start with the heart of the town. And I would get it right first, because I would be comfortable that people would come to the town. And then as I got on my feet, I would probably start to move from there. As opposed to going and making the, you know, it's like putting lipstick on a pig. It doesn't really work. I don't think the town, I don't think fixing the town is that, fixing the Main Street is that big of a project. I really don't. I really think it's a million and a half dollar capital campaign. And I'm confident that we could stir up enough if we had the right business plan that said storefront one through however many exists, I don't know how many there are. Does anybody know how many storefronts are in Maine? I think we have know your numbers. You should know your numbers. How many storefronts? 35? So we should really know how many we have. And we should have a very distinct plan of what's going to go into each one of the places. Because the more unique things are, and the more things make sense, the more people will come. And I would try to fill up every one of them, and if not, I'd start consolidating spaces. So what I'd like to have, what I'd like to have happen tonight before we go into the questions and answers is, I'd like to, I'd like to request that we all agree that we're going to put a capital campaign together and we're going to raise the money however we need to. And try to raise a million and a half dollars. If you get to 1.350, I'll put in the last 150. Don't cheer, because a 1.350 is a lot of money, okay? But I'll put in the last. I'll match, 10%. But that's a million, that's a lot of money. $150,000 for a town that I don't live in. Because I believe that if we can do it right one time, and we can give people the template and the roadmap of what it should look like, we'll be able to make a difference. So before we go into Q and A, is there anybody that thinks that putting that campaign together is a bad idea? And I'll do most of the work. Anybody have any questions about how that campaign would work? All of us? Use your mic, please? No, for you.
No, I'll let you explain what you think.
Nobody can hear what you're saying.
I would like for you to explain the process.
So here's what I think. We have to be committed as a community from this day forward, we're going to kick off the revitalization of Main Street. So that's number one. Number two, we have to agree on what our intent is. Now, there's current tenants in some of those storefronts, and we need to give them the same level of respect and the same cleanup of their facility that the ones that are empty are going to get. And we have to agree that over the next year or two years, our mission is to totally transform not only the facade, but the guts of Main Street, so that we give people a reason to want to drive here. If nothing else, we give ourselves pride about our town. It's my opinion that the city should buy the buildings. And that may be a huge conflict of interest for the city or whether you own the buildings. But the reason that I think that they should own it is because it's an asset that is the jewel of the town. It's controversial, it'd be very controversial. But it's an asset that I think is the jewel of the town. And it's the city's responsibility to promote tourism. And it's the city's responsibility to give us a roadmap on how to improve employment. And it's the city's responsibility to take care of the infrastructure. But it is our responsibility to participate. It is our responsibility to trust the process. It is our responsibility to do whatever we can to draw attention to our town, because we have limited resources. So when the issue happened, the quote-unquote negative press that happened a month ago or whatever that was, there was plenty of people in Kansas City writing articles about it. "Oh, this guy was happened, this happened, and that happened, and this was bad, and that was bad", right? And they gave the town a bad rap. Well, after spending the day here, this town deserves much better than that. But we now have to show people. And so you guys all came here tonight, took your time away from your families and away from watching whatever you watch and making dinner. And I took my time. And I will give you as much time as you want of mine. Because I don't start things until they don't finish. But I will not stay and I will not finish it if you're not committed. I'll put my time and my money right there on the table with you to prove a point that charity starts at home. To prove a point that no town should die. And to prove a point that this is a great country. So, the process has to start where we acknowledge that our primary objective is a capital campaign. The process has to start where elected officials and citizens agree that we start this process. The problem with me is I move very fast. Really fast. And I worry about how fast the town can move. But the first thing I would do is I would blacktop the street. And I would re-stripe all the parking spaces. Because it doesn't cost that much to do it, but it's a step. The second thing I would do is I would wash all the windows of every storefront. And all the nonsense is sticking in the windows. And I would wash the buildings and I would clean them up. Because it doesn't cost any money to do that. And I would go inside these empty storefronts and I'd clean them out and I'd make sure the locks were, and I'd make sure that their buildings aren't falling down. And I would keep going, every couple of weeks with some new initiative that got the thing moving. And I would talk about it. I'd use social media. I'd use the media. I'd use yourselves and your families and your friends and your contacts. And I would start the process this weekend. Nothing is preventing you from cleaning up those storefronts with water and soap. Nothing is preventing you, other than maybe the weather from laying some, a seal down, right? You can't do it in this weather, I don't think. Maybe you can, I don't know. Nothing's preventing you from striping it and cleaning up the weeds and the garbage that's on the sidewalks as I walk down Main Street. Nothing's preventing you from fixing the light bulbs that are burned out on Main Street. Or planting some flowers instead of me looking at these brown, and not flowers, but plant some evergreens. Put something in there. It looks like you guys don't care. And I don't think that's the case. But when I pulled up in park, I walked out and I saw this, I don't know what you call it, like a flower pot. And I just saw this flower just drooped over dead. And it's funny, but not really. It's not funny. Because the pride that you're going to feel is going to change your life. I started something a year and a half ago at my company. It's interesting. It was about volunteering. And I require, I have 6,000 employees. And I require that if you work for me, you have to volunteer 32 hours a year. Non-negotiable. And the way I made it non-negotiable is you do it on work time. You do it on my time. And we were on a call with 6,000 employees and I got some emails after from people told me that it was BS, you can't make me volunteer. And I said, "Well, I can't, you can't make me keep you." It's a condition of employment. Now, the difference is, is that I can make them do it because I'm paying them. They get their hourly wage, they go volunteer. What's interesting is the same people that did it after, months later wrote me letters or sent me videos on YouTube saying, "It changed my life." "I was having a bad relationship with my wife. I was about to get divorced. We went and volunteered. We found something we had in common. We found each other again. We rebuilt our life. We found that we cleansed our souls. We gave back to other people. We realized we really don't have it there." I took my kids who thought that not getting a toy was important. I took them to other kids who have nothing. And we learned that it was important. So it'd be interesting for me to see, because I'm being as serious as I can, I will stay committed until the day we cut the ribbon. But if you guys don't participate, I will cut bait. And I will tell people that you guys didn't follow through. So when you accept the challenge and you accept the responsibility, you have to understand what you're signing up for. You're signing up to make a commitment. And all I really need is your time and your energy and your trusting process. Trusting them. All I really need is start with Main Street. I drove by a number of houses today. I don't know if you all don't know, they make things called lawn mowers. If you don't want to cut your grass, that's okay. But around Main Street, you have to treat it like your jewelry store. It's the only piece of pride that you can possibly demonstrate to yourselves and to outsiders that this is the thing you love the most. So I would expect this weekend that the stores are going to get opened and the storefronts are going to get cleaned out and the windows are going to get washed and garbage is going to get picked up. And something, Lord, please, anything, plant something in those pots. Something brown, something green, something that'll survive. Make it fake. I don't care. But it's a symbol of progress. And every week you should have something that is a symbol of progress, some sort of progress. And we gotta have a checklist. We gotta put an agenda together. And if you bail out, I'll bail out too. If you don't bail out, I promise you I will stay with you till the end. And I'll call every resource that I have before I run out of money to make sure that we get it done. This could be one of the coolest rebirths in modern day. It could be an amazing opportunity to show people that the American spirit isn't dead and it doesn't always have to do with money. So what do we do? What do we do? Should I fly home tonight and move on? Wash windows, blacktop, yes ma'am. You want to say something?
Say, "Let's do it."
Let's do it. And so how many storefronts are here? Again, does anybody know that number, sir?
35.
35. And how many rows are here? What number's on your row in the back? Is it alphabetical? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, plenty. I'd say that if you're in a row, you take a storefront. And you work as a team and work with people that you don't know. And you get to know your neighbors. How many of you don't know half the people in here? This could be the greatest American story about people getting out of their house, learning who their neighbors are, coming together for a goal. Yes, we're strapped for cash. Yes, the town can't pay for everything. Yes, the state's not going to pay for much. But I'm telling you that if we can move the ball forward and get the attention that this story deserves, it will happen like that. I don't know if there's any mics. Is this the only mic? Is that portable? Let's have a little Q and A so that we can lighten things up a little bit. Does anybody have a question? Yes, sir. We're bringing the mic to you. I can't hear you, sir. One second, sir. We're going to bring your mic.
That's back to the boot of town. We had locals, meat factories, cheese factories, and all the businesses in the town back then. And now, we don't have that.
What you have the opportunity to recreate is some level of tourism. So I was told, and maybe I was wrong or maybe I misheard, that 1,000 people a weekend are going to Weston. Do you know what 1,000 people a weekend will do for your town? Do you, I mean, do you guys really know? It's a game changer. 1,000 people a weekend. And if they just spend 20 bucks, it doesn't matter. It's $100,000 plus or minus of revenue coming through the, through the Main Street a month? That's revenue for people that provide for their families. How many women in here have businesses at home? Craft type. Ma'am, can you stand up? Who makes crafts and they make businesses out of their home? Who has a business out of their home? Raise your hand if you have a business out of your home, please. Stand up. Please, stand up. Don't be shy. If you raise your hand, I know who you are, so I'm going to stand up. If you have a business out of the house, what do you, what do you do? If you have a business out of the house, what do you, what do you do out of the house, ma'am?
Kettle corn.
Kettle corn, okay? You can't say it yet. Ma'am?
Exterminating business, rental property.
Exterminating? Yes, ma'am?
Medical transcription, that's for the hospital.
Medical transcription, that sounds really hard. Yes, ma'am?
Accounting.
Accounting?
Massage and bed and breakfast.
You have a bed and breakfast? That's nice. And massage? Actuall, give us your property! We're taking you. Ma'am?
Paint and wallpaper, interior design.
Interior design? Sir?
My plumbing business office is in my house.
Plumbing business, ma'am?
Jewelry.
Jewelry?
And she is my partner. We run one of the largest global casino gaming consultancies in the world.
Knows a lot of words.
I know, right? And all here in Horton.
Online gaming?
No. We, we work with casinos, Department of Justices and Attorney General's offices with regard to the regulation of land-based and internet game.
Wow.
Right?
That's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming here.
We moved here from Seattle.
Why'd you move here?
We got our children out of the city where they were asking me about crack cocaine and hookers.
We found a home here for ninety-seven hundred dollars. That's not a down payment. That's what we paid for our home. We bought our next door home for seventy-five hundred dollars. We now own and have invested in Horton ten lots. We're invested in this town. We love the people in this town. They know us. They watch our house. They watch us. Nobody's breaking into my house without my neighbor coming after them. In Seattle, I'm sure they know we've left yet.
Anybody else? Thank you. You guys can say thank you. Questions? Yes, ma'am?
It's not really a question. I just wanted you to, you know, there are tons and tons of people that care about this town. The Horton Charger Facebook page has over six hundred and fifty-eight, I think, people who like it. And there was one week back during football season that it had over a thousand visitors during that week. So if we can get that many people to care about our children and our future, surely we can get them involved into helping this town and all these kids can help. And, you know, I just think it would be a really great thing because we really, really do love this community and...
I can feel it. I can feel the love of this community. So there's no, the fact that you guys are all here tonight is evidence of the love in this community. But, but love doesn't pay the bills. And what we have to treat this like is a business. And one of the things in business that's challenging is everybody can't be in charge. Which is not how it works. This is not how it works. And so we have to trust the process. And we have to be openly critical in a very respectful way. But I have a policy in my business. I love these people arguably, but you better have a better plan. So if you don't like my idea, you better have a good one. Because you can't just say, "That's a bad idea." It's a bad idea because my idea is X, Y, and Z. So for those of you that wanna be involved, it's good to have input and feedback. But you gotta have a better plan. So if we start this process this week, which I'm very excited to start and tell everybody about, these are our social media coordinators. Raise your hand, girls. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am? Mike, you're falling out of the job. Ready to? Yes, ma'am?
Okay, after the Main Street and possibly the lake fixing up all of that, what would be the main focus after that? What would we do on a continual basis to keep the town the way that we want it to be?
So I think that, you know, the question is, what do we do after Main Street and the lake are fixed up? I'm gonna give you the, I'll give you my public answer first and then I'll give you my private answer. My public answer is let's get Main Street right first and then worry about it. My private answer is, if you let what happened, happened to Main, if you let what happened to Main Street happen to other places, then Main Street will be nice and a lot of tourists will come in, but all the residents will leave. So I think that in addition, and I don't wanna pass judgment, which is why I'm holding back, in addition to fixing up Main Street, I would encourage people to look at their own streets and their own neighborhood and the way their house looks and the way their neighbor's house looks and the way the abandoned house looks. And in a lot of communities, people take pride in their neighborhood, the way they cut the grass or they have to coordinate things. But I don't wanna tell people how to live with their house. I just wanna tell people how to treat their businesses. But my off-the-record advices, you should work on your streets too because we drove around and I saw some stuff in yards and trash in yards and beat up empty dead cars in yards and things that just... As I drive to come to downtown Horton, I'm still gonna drive by all of that. I don't wanna see that. That's just personal opinion. I think a lot of it'll take care of itself. The tax base and the tax revenue will take care of itself. I would still challenge the mayor and all of you to merge with a few other small towns. You won't survive on your own. Just can't afford the infrastructure. Yes, ma'am? One second.
Why do you think it's important for the city to own the businesses on Main Street rather than individuals?
Not the businesses, the buildings.
Oh, just the building?
Yeah, I want, I want individuals to own the businesses inside of Main Street. Because there's nothing like a private business owner waking up in the morning, opening the door and closing the door at night and having pride for his business. But I, I think that part of the reason that the storefronts are empty is because business owners can't either afford to open up a business, don't have rent, the kind of rent that it takes, don't have the money to clean it all up. So I would prefer that the city own the buildings and be responsible for them and then it accepted applications for people to move their business in. But I want private people to own the businesses inside.
Well, I was just wondering because I recently acquired a couple of the buildings and I, one was torn down and I'm really into the old architecture and I have a passion about staying in it and taking care of it and I was just thinking, I don't know...
What would happen?
Yeah, I mean, the city, you know, the...
The city may treat it like a government building.
They change, yeah, you know, people...
I, I don't know, I'm not a politician. I don't ever wanna be one. Can't make a living. I don't know what sort of charter could be established, standards could be established in the acquisition of the buildings and what sort of, I don't wanna call it corporate governance, but city governance that could exist. But I like the city being responsible for it and I like the town holder saying, "This is what we expect out of the city. This is what we expect. If we go through with this, these are the standards. We expect it to be kept in this old style. We expect it to be old world." I think as a community, you have to decide what you want it to look like. But I, my preference is it goes back in time. I don't wanna see, you know, stucco and stainless steel and I don't wanna see it look historic, not look... Everybody ever been to Disney World? You might go down Main Street and buy all the crazy stuff? I would love for it to feel something like that. Maybe not that elaborate because we're not all Disney. But to the point, we can make it feel like Main Street. That, that's kinda my thought.
I just wanted to get a youth perspective into this.
I'll be honest with you, buddy.
You are young. You talk about merging and working together as a team. But my personal opinion is that right now we're not merged together. I feel like we have the kids that go to school, the people that take care of the kids, and then we've got the retirement community. I don't know half the people in here because I don't, I don't know the older generation. I've lived here all my life. I should know all of that. I mean, we're a small town. I just, I wanna, we gotta find a way to merge that gap and to work together. Otherwise, there's, nothing's gonna happen. So, I don't know this.
I think you're totally right. And really, it'd be nice to live in a town that's age-blind, color-blind, ethnicity-blind, religious, you know, religious-blind. We live in America, so that's a tough challenge. But if this town's gonna survive, you gotta start somewhere. I think that's a great function. Yes, sir?
Marcus, going back to the downtown and the city owning the buildings, has a property owner down there. I'd like your feedback on, would it be a possibility to maybe compromise with some of the business owners that are invested in the same vision that you're talking about for going back in time and revitalizing the buildings? Maybe to set standards for participation in the program instead of outright turning over the ownership? But it's my obligation for some of the returns participating.
Let me, let me say, you're being super respectful, so let me say it a little differently. Why the hell do I have to sell my building? You don't. You don't have to do anything.
Well, I guess what I'm looking at...
I mean, the next beauty of this country is that you don't, you don't have to sell your buildings. But I don't know how the whole plan comes together. And maybe the alternative is, is that the people that own buildings and wanna keep them have to be very involved in the process of dictating what it should look like. So you know what? I don't want the money. I'm willing to put in more money. I'm willing to do what it takes to make it work. I wanna be part of it, right?
Exactly, exactly. That's, that's what I wanted your feedback on.
But I, but I will say this to you. Everything's for sale for a price.
Yep, certainly.
Maybe not everything. Maybe not everything. I said, "Everything's for sale for a price." Anybody that needs to go, by the way, during this, don't feel like it's gonna be rude or odd. Everybody's got kids and laundry and dinner, so if y'all need to go, I won't, it won't bother you.
I think it's just like the Horton can do it, pull people in. It's just like when we had the Horton preliminaries. The people get together, the churches get together, and the people do come. Just like they will to Old Island and they will come. I think if we don't, they will come.
So do I. You know, I even wouldn't mind seeing, you know, once a month farmers markets on the street where you close down Main Street. Friday night festivals where you close down Main Street. Old-style car shows where you close down Main Street. Bring the circus to town. I'm making up things, but if you use Main Street, it could be wildly, wildly popular as a venue for other things. Build a stage at the end of Main Street that you could literally, you know, close off the street and people can come entertain. If you build it in a way that's intelligent and it's smart and it's collaborative, it will work. Because between St. Joe's and here, which is how I came, I didn't see much. And so there was a lot of people that lived there that they could come to the beautiful town with nice female and buy something and have fun and have a family activity. I think it's great.
Well, what got me is, the H town needs to have stuff for kids to do. I mean, they go to the lake, they go run downtown. Where's the excitement at? Where are the games at? Where are the playgrounds? Where are the, the times to do during daytime? That's why people are getting in trouble because there's nothing for them to do in the town. No activity to do. Doesn't form arcade or no arcade or doesn't form the go-to in the town.
That's right. You're finding out in a lot of towns that when there's nothing to do, and I found out in Ohio. In fact, I got myself in trouble when I was a kid. When there's nothing to do, you'll find something to do. It's just not gonna be good. I think that's a good point. Yes, sir, I'll take a couple more questions.
Marcus, along with the social funding that we can do and it works ridiculously well, have you heard about Main Street America? It's a grant process through the government and it's very simple to follow through and and they may meet our requirement, our need, oh no, our need for the rest of the money that we can come up with. Main Street America's worked with a lot of small towns. But I don't think they have the vision that we have. I don't think that they could create the goal of actually rebirthing a town. But could we use both funding measures?
Yeah, we could. Here's the challenge with grants. Grants have rules.
Right.
And I want the town to decide how things are gonna go, not somebody a thousand miles away to tell me how it's gonna go. So if we come up short and we need to then, you know, adjust, we'll do that. But I want you guys to author what this looks like, you know? Anybody ever written a grant?
Yes.
They're not easy.
No.
And they have a lot of rules.
Yes.
And so what I wanna try to do before we have to go to that is, the money that we need to raise, I don't think is so significant that we have to have everybody else tell them, the government tell us how to do it. And I don't mean local government. I mean people outside of here. I wanna control our own destiny and I want people from this town to feel like they're in control of that process because people hate losing control. They all accept change as long as their hand's in the pot. Take their hand out of the pot, it won't work. So it exists and we should go after it, but not unless we have to. Yes?
How do you, I guess I don't understand how you're gonna join other cities.
How am I gonna join other cities?
Yeah.
I want Tim to go meet with the mayors of the other towns who are probably struggling as well and say, "How do we come together and form one town?" It's been done many times, many times around this country. It's not a new idea. What I'm challenging you to think about is, in the attempts that have happened that have failed, it's generally around ego. What's the town gonna be called? Where is the police station gonna be? Who's the mayor really gonna be? Who's in charge? And so like any corporate acquisition or merger, the question is, what's the final entity look like? But it's really Tim's responsibility to go sit down with the leaders of the other town. The town we went to today, there's 300 people in it. I went to their Main Street. I mean, it was worse than this Main Street. And it was a couple miles away. So we have these independent post offices and libraries and a separate mayor and a separate police department and separate this and separate that. You can't afford it. And so businesses merge all the time, right? And they merge because they realize that it's more profitable and more formidable to be together than it is to be apart. And I don't believe that the long-term prospects of this town can survive if you don't merge, and here's why. There are 1,700 people here today, this lady pointed out. There are students, there are parents, and there are grandparents. Those are the three ages. Unfortunately, the one thing I can promise you tonight, all of us at some point are gonna die. And so if we don't have a new class of people coming in, we don't have new people coming in and we're not making the town larger, what happens? It evaporates. And so a town like Hiawatha with 5,000, with a beautiful John Gere store and a Ford dealership and a Walmart, you'll never be able to compete with that with a town of 1,700. But a town of 5,000 or 6,000, if you join up with other people, will be more attractive for businesses outside of this town to come into. Because there's a larger base. You don't have a base. You need a larger base. And so it sounds complicated, but it's not as complicated as you think. It's very bureaucratic. Don't go to the meetings. You'll bore yourself with it. But it's possible.
Is the governing board, are they on board for this or...?
I don't know.
This is actually the first, I mean, myself today was with him most of the day. The governing board was not, this is actually... This is actually the first time that they're hearing this. I guess my question is, is for the downtown business owners that, you know, that we're looking to attract and if the city would get involved with purchasing the, the building itself. I, I support downtown because obviously that's where I'm at and I support the whole community. But at the end of the day, what are the outside businesses on 15th Street and First Avenue and up on the north end of Central? What are them businesses going to, what are they gonna, how are they going to become in, are they gonna become hostile because we're focusing on city taxpayers' dollars that are going into the local downtown community? I mean, I, I don't think I'm in, I don't think I'm out of line with anybody else in the building. I think I'm willing to do my part. I think everybody's willing to do their part if we step up and we form a coalition and we pull this off. But the hostile environment side of it and the uneasiness of, well, you know, it happens every day at the chamber. I mean, you hear from, you hear from the business owner of the chamber, "Well, I..." well, I'd like to join the chamber, but what the heck has the chamber ever done for me? Well, I don't want that same cliche to come from the outside business owners out on 15th or anywhere else to say, well, they supported downtown, but what are they gonna do for me now? I think in, in all honesty, if we're going to look at a total coalition, Marcus, I think we need to look at, obviously, we can't buy every storefront. We can't obviously buy and, and critique every business. But to the same, the same point, I think we need everybody on board, the outside business owners on 15th and around the other areas that have businesses. Because I, I don't want the hostile environment. I don't, I don't want that negative feeling if we haven't done anything for all the businesses. So I, I, the outcome, the support that we have.
My, my, my response to that would be, that if the outlying businesses out of Main Street want to prosper, more people still have to come to the town. You gotta drive by or you live by it. If you want that house, if you want the home values to rise, you have to give people a reason to want to live here. These houses today are not worth what they were worth five years ago, or 10 years ago. So what everybody's gotta think about is self-preservation to a degree. And so everybody's business, and everybody that owns land, or everybody that owns a house, or whatever they own, even if it's not on Main Street, is the attention to the town and the rise of the town going to give me an appreciation? If General Motors comes out with a good car, is my stock gonna be worth more, even if I don't drive that car? The answer is yes. So what I would tell anybody who has a business outside, this isn't about Main Street. This is about the town, and we have limited resources and limited time, so we're gonna start with that. If the group thinks we should start at the lake, then let's start at the lake. Good luck. Good luck. So it's not a disregard or disrespect to anybody. But how many people own a home here? I'd like your home to be worth 5% more than it is today. I'd like it you to be able to sell it so that people want to come here. And the only way a company's gonna come here is if the town is vibrant. You want to bring new business here? You couldn't do it today. You could not do it today. You just couldn't. And so you gotta take step one, and it may be painful. And here's how I want to describe this process to you. For anybody that's ever had surgery, this is gonna feel like surgery, except I'm not gonna be able to give you any anesthesia. It's gonna hurt like hell. People are gonna be mad. They're gonna yell, they're gonna cuss, and they're gonna say things they shouldn't say. But you gotta keep your eye on the prize. If we want to fix the business of Horton, you gotta start by fixing the foundation. And the only thing that I can identify in a day is you gotta pick one thing that everybody could rally around, that would become an icon of the town, that other people would want to come participate and leave their money. I couldn't come up with anything else. We went to the lake. I just didn't see it. I didn't see it. And I wouldn't even mind that on some of the property behind some of these buildings that are empty, put in a couple basketball courts up in a park, and put in some things around it, and literally starting on the street. Because I guarantee you, that if we got some momentum, I'd have no problem calling Spalding and saying, I want you to pay for us to put up a court. I have no problem calling Louisville Slugger and saying, I need 20 grand to put up a baseball diamond. We'll get that momentum, but we have to start in the middle. We'll get people to support, because everybody will want to be part of this greatest American experiment of all time. But we gotta at least start somewhere. Yes, ma'am?
In your opinion, what's your timeframe for downtown?
The Marcus timeframe or the Horton timeframe? I, I, what's that?
Two years, I'm just curious.
I don't think it should take more than a year. Because, I mean, who do I gotta go to get a permit to fix the building? We just need to raise some money. And, and the city does have some money. And I don't know how you guys do special referendums, or how you guys look at those kind of things, but you do have some money. You can spend some money. Well, everybody, they shouldn't have called me here. Kim's like, oh my God, who called this guy? Yes, sir?
I want to move this way out on Main Street, flat and city, which is land.
You wanna move here? We'll get you a great deal on rent.
I want to fix downtown for nine and a half.
Right. You don't fix downtown, you will not have a town. You will not. And I like the fact that if we put the right businesses in, and we really think about it, and everybody's got the right amount of space, and we can get tourism here, there's probably 100 jobs that can go on, on that street. It's a lot of jobs. Everybody loves kettle corn. Yes, sir?
I want to know about the control party, who's gonna control head of submissions around this, or?
I'm not a politician. I have no idea. I'll let, I'll let Tim answer that, but that's a great question.
I would definitely say, Mike, that we would definitely have to set up some committees. The Chamber of Commerce, I feel like, should be highly involved. City Council be involved. But I think if we're going to do it as an entire community and get together and pull it off, it's gonna take a committee to pull it off, but it's gonna take the whole general public to, to get it done. And I'm, I'm overwhelmed by what I see here tonight for support, and I think that we're all on board for the same goal, and we just need to make it happen. So I mean, if there's...
Your name, Mike? Are you volunteering?
HIDC, HIDC has a board right now that has a hard time getting together. I think at the last, last year, on 2013, I don't even think they've actually finalized their annual, annual year yet. Maybe not even in 2012. I think there's around, an estimated of around $40,000 in an account with HIDC. I see Steve Roberts sitting out there as a county commissioner.
But I'll tell you one thing. I want business people running. And that's no disrespect to anybody who's not in business, but people that have some money sense. Because when you, when you're fighting with people, you gotta use, you gotta use logic. All you gotta do is use numbers. You can beat anybody in any argument if you have the facts. If you fight with emotion, you're gonna lose. So man or woman, I don't care. Give me the smartest kid at the high school. Make sure he's got his calculator, numbers.
Did you mention annexing more land around the lake, or?
No, I, what I was asking for, this is the question that I had, is why are the, why is the land around the lake not part of the town?
That's exactly what I'm asking. Why isn't it? And should it be? And could it be create a larger or more diverse type of place?
Here's what my thought was, and we talked about this today. I, I would like as much land to be in the city as possible, but I also know that if I was a landowner there, I would want to know that the flexibility and the freedom that I have today to build what I wanted, to put what I wanted, that I would not lose that. I would want to be grandfathered into that. And I would also want to know that if I'm gonna help, I don't know who I'm paying, I think they pay their taxes to the county today. I would want to know that if I'm also gonna do that, I'd want a small break on my taxes. I'd want a small break on my electric bill. I'd want to just, I'd want to be incentivized to be it. I don't want to take advantage. But whether anybody agrees with it or not, everybody will always do something for a dollar. It does. It also creates a responsibility to service those properties as well. So you have to look at the math. I just like the fact that we put so much on that lake, and, raise your hand if you live on the lake. There was one lady, live on the lake. Here's the problem that I have with the lake as a business person. I would have waited until you contributed, came into my town before I put all this money to make your lake nice. Because I made your property value work for me. I would have come to you with a plan and said, I'd like you to be part of my town. I'm gonna give you a break on the taxes. You grandfathered in, you build whatever you want. I don't care what you do on your land, because I know you don't want to give up that freedom. I need your help. And if you give me that, I'm gonna put 3.5 million dollars into the lake, which is gonna make this money. You own 24? What'd you say you did for a living?
Terminator, business, and rental parties.
Holy moly. You're like the Donald Trump of Horton. But your hair is real.
And they're not paid for.
These aren't paid for either. Don't get me started.
Marcus, at my price point, are you wanting, would you say that the city would buy the properties for them?
I wanna, I wanna hold that answer. The question was, at what price point should the properties be, should the properties be built for, uh, properties be sold for? I'm a very transparent guy, so I'll give you my answer. They should all be appraised, right? And for those that don't want to sell, we should really sit down and understand how they can be part of the process. I'll say this, and for those of you that own property on Main Street, please don't hate me, but eminent domain is a very distinct possibility when you have a town that is actually about to close. And so you really want to get into a situation, eminent domains are very, anybody know what that means? Yeah. So you sound like you know because of experience. Eminent domain still requires that the property be appraised and a fair value be established. It does require that. You don't ever want to go to that, because eminent domain is usually used for highways and byways and transportation and access and government buildings and things like that. In this case, we would lose in court if we tried, just to be clear. But it'd be fun to try. Nobody that owns a building should be cheated from what their investment was or receiving the appreciation of it. This isn't an opportunity to steal stuff for getting on the cheap. Conversely, it's not an opportunity to be held hostage either, right? You don't want to get into a situation where somebody thinks, oh my gosh, they're gonna, I'm going to Tahiti, they're gonna buy this building, I'm gonna haunt them with one hole down. I mean, what's gonna happen? By the way, I just want to warn you. It's gonna happen. What would be really funny is if it all got done and there was one that wasn't, and it said, Joe Smith owns this property. Right? We laugh about it, but there's gonna be somebody that doesn't want to improve it like this young lady, or the people back there, and doesn't want any part of this. You're gonna drive down Main Street, it's all gonna look beautiful, there's gonna be this one people, tell people that's our haunted house. What else?
I guess I would be interested, and I, I want to try to build on this, but if you're...
Microphone.
I know, but I, who all here owns a building downtown? Raise your hand. How many of you still owe on your building downtown? We, we, all these businesses who are here, except for, I think, one hand I saw, owns their building. And that building's assessment is gonna be based on their business. And so the valuation of that building is based on the business they do out of that building.
What if it's empty?
I, I'm just saying, the ones that have the business in them, and we go to them, and if they tell us...
Like English letter.
English letter.
Nice stuff, by the way, in case you all haven't been there.
Plug for loop.
Come on, guys.
And I guess I'm, on, on a citizen's standpoint, and I, and I know several people that have businesses down there, I know part of this is only gonna work if that is the case. If we're gonna give it to the city, and I would assume the plan would be that they would lease that building from the city. Do their, do their business, make their money.
Yeah, here's what, here's what my idea was, and it may never fly. I haven't really thought about how it's gonna work. But the ideal situation for me is that the city owns all the buildings, and the businesses that are in them pay rent based on a percentage of sales, and not a fixed amount. So that they don't feel like they're being strangled. And that it basically forces the revenue that's coming into the city to be a function of the, of the amount that we put into those businesses. So if I take a chance and put my kettle corn business there, I keep using you as an example, had to taste it first, then the rent that I want you to pay to, to the city is based on the business that you do. Well, what it does is it creates a nice cycle, and it creates an incentive for the community to, to frequent those businesses, because we know how the rent's gonna be attributed. Does that make sense? She doesn't like the plan. Does that make any sense, conceptually? Yes, ma'am?
Would you put a cap on that?
Uh, I would not. Because in the months where you don't do any business, your rent would be essentially zero. And I would make the percentage small enough that it would never strangle you. And maybe as your business went up, the percentage would drop. But I'm realistic enough to know that you couldn't do that much business where your rent's gonna be out of whack. So if you start in year one, and your rent is a percentage of sales, right, then in my opinion, you know, I, I probably would even consider, if you want a cap, then I'd require a minimum. That's the long ending, that's the, that's the short answer. Anybody who would be a tenant, and I have tenants like this, that want a cap on rent, I'm saying, okay, no problem. But then I get a minimum. No minimum, no cap. Cap, minimum. And I'd rather business owners not have minimums. Because I think the city should own the asset, and the city should maintain the exterior. And I want to have a situation where people are fighting to be tenants, because it's a great way to start a business with not a lot of money. How many people can go in and just move into a building and put their fixtures and start their business and only have to pay a percentage of their sales? I mean, it's kind of revolutionary. May not be a perfect model, but I know that, how many storefronts are empty right now? Are you on Main Street, by the way? Ma'am?
Me?
Yes, ma'am. Do you have a business on Main Street?
Not right now.
You're liking the idea, though, aren't you?
I have a business on my toes.
You have a business? What kind of business do you have? Chiropractor, okay. You have massage there, too?
Not yet.
The lady next to you has a massage business.
That's her mom.
Next time I come here, I'm gonna stop everybody outside. I'm gonna make sure you don't sit with anybody you know. Yes, sir? Anybody?
Oh, there's a general thing we have downtown that are more service-oriented rather than product, where we have a disability, like a shuttle workshop type thing downtown. You got dentists down there, the banks down there.
All that should be done.
All those things. How do you establish a rating for those?
I think you sit down, I think you sit down with the business owner, and you come up with something that you understand their business and you're fair and reasonable. And you, I mean, this has to be a collaboration, and I'm a third party with no interest. So I think I can be helpful in that process, because I don't own any of the buildings and I don't get any of the rent. And I think having service-oriented businesses is part of the charm. I love the fact that I saw a dentist in an insurance agency. I think that's, it's part of the charm. It's, everybody comes to one place to do business. That's what Main Street was originally created for years ago.
My question is, hey, draw on me, where's my building?
Ma'am? Allison, you're off my...
No, mine, do you? What I was gonna say is, if the buildings are owned right now, and the owners are in cahoots, wants to do it the same way, everybody's along the same, why couldn't they be grandfathered in with the clause that when they want to sell their business, it goes to the city?
They could. It's a great idea.
Because my big attraction was, the buildings are owned for. So I don't have that to deal with, because I'm starting from the ground up, and I want to get my business started.
If I was negotiating on your behalf, which I'm really good at going both ways, I would say, if you sell your building, I'll either increase the amount, or I'll decrease the amount, and you don't have to pay rent. So the same fear that you have, that's why you gotta look at it on a case-by-case basis.
Well, and part of my situation is, the building was, I kind of had the feeling that it was gonna be torn down, so I'm rescuing it. And I wanted to, you know, put it back the way it was, make sure it's going correctly, and I feel like that power's gonna be taken away from me.
That's a good point. And, and that's why I think there's a lot to work out on whether people contribute, sell, don't sell. I think there's a lot to figure out.
And I mean, my goal was to try and bring the businesses back, because I grew up in the city, and I can tell. This, this town has the opportunity to do that, but it's, nobody's really seeing it. It's fading, and when they do realize, you know, it could be too late.
Could be too late.
Yeah.
Honestly, I think tomorrow could be too late. Yes, sir?
My question is, if the CEO of the building is duly charged and then...
My question is, if the city owns the building, is the city in charge of the maintenance of the rent?
How I see it is that the city's responsible for the exterior and the renter's in charge of the interior. Typical how it is, and, and all I'm thinking about is like, when I rent buildings to people, I can't take care of the inside, I take care of the building.
Marcus, I, and I guess that's where I was gonna go to, and, and I appreciate the questions I didn't wanna put in, but I, the advantage to the process, I guess is what I'm getting is, is that yes, we would, we would own that building, so the advantage to the person with that building is, is that when something is wrong with it, now the city is responsible to fix that building. The young lady down here is saying, "I bought this building because I wanna save it." And she's saying, "What is it, I've paid for that building, what is the advantage to me of, of selling that back to the city when I know I've already paid for it, when I'm gonna do all the work?" I, I think the advantage, what he's saying, and you correct me if I'm wrong, is that now the city becomes responsible for that because it's gonna have to meet the plan. Um, and once that plan's set, we're gonna come in and we're gonna fix that building for you and now you don't have any of that cost. Your cost is gonna be in your payments to us.
If there isn't, but there's a pride, but there's a pride of ownership that I think is probably, you know, a lot of people, including you, me, we work all our lives to just say, "I, I bought this. This is mine." And I just think, I don't think we're gonna figure that out tonight.
No, and that's, I guess, the leading thing is in this is that we, we have ordinances now. Those ordinances tell everybody in this room how we're gonna mow our grass, how we're gonna keep our buildings, how we're gonna maintain the town.
How's that working out for you?
But that's my point, Marcus, we're, we're... She wants to own her building, if I tell her, "You're right, we don't have to buy that from you." But in order to make the plan work, you had made the comment that we were gonna have a plan in place and you need to follow that plan now.
And, and, and the city is, and the voters of the town are gonna determine, this is the plan, this is what we accept, now what's the punishment if she doesn't follow it?
Right, well, so that, because now that puts us right back in the scenario we're in now is that the, the buildings that are being expected to be fixed, the houses that are being expected to be fixed, the yards...
Jails are awfully full.
But that's, but that's to my point.
You guys didn't think I was gonna leave here without saying...
This whole issue is, was prompted by such, that, that thing. And, and if the city owns those buildings, we wouldn't have this problem because we'd be the ones fixing the building. We're not responsible for fixing that building. The owner is, you're responsible, if your building starts to fall, you're gonna have to fix it. If the city owns it, now we become responsible. But if she opts out, and now we vote in all these ordinances once again, which the ordinances we have now are voted in, now she's gonna have to follow our plan.
Yeah, so here's what I think, and just, I wanna address this.
And what's that timeline?
There's ways to get, yeah, there's, well, if I'm her, I'm negotiating for her, I'm not following the plan until you follow it.
Right.
And so, if there's a first right of refusal that the city has to buy her building, that satisfies that. If there's an ordinance and the, and the citizens of this town vote, and everybody has to understand that the violation of those has consequences. And the consequences could be, I'm making this up for discussion, could be a lien, it could be, "I'm gonna come fix it for you." Anybody ever owned a home and forgot to get insurance, but the mortgage company just puts insurance on it? They don't ask, they just... So I think you could, there's enough ways to build trap doors, and maybe she, along with other people that own properties, would help us draft something that says, "Look, I'm gonna play ball, so let me tell you what I would write in for the one person that doesn't."
Well, and too, this town, little towns are known for their camaraderie and helping each other and working together. You know, it's not so much if you're an outsider coming in, and I think that's part of the problem. It's easy to see the bad in people, it takes a real skill to find the good, you know, and to recognize it and bring it out. And, everybody needs to work together, and that's what I'm saying, if they're playing ball and working together, obviously we're gonna be an issue for people that own them now. And my deal with the city owning them is before, the people, who has the main, who has the ultimate say? You know how many buildings have been torn down around here that probably didn't necessarily need to? I mean, I personally thought mine was about the, and I was told, "Oh no, this stuff here is structurally sound." Is that mine?
If, if I was the mayor, I would take and create a zone. And I would literally define it by the block and literally say, "Inside this zone, these are the rules and this is how it's gonna exist." And I'd put it in front of the town and let them say yes or no. And then once that passes, then it's... Or what's your...
Well, my idea with the, the bringing back though, I've been thinking about this for several months, um, since I acquired the building actually, and I've found a restoration company that actually can take photographs and build from the ground. Uh, because I'm thinking, Atkinson is not older than Horton. Horton was here first, Horton was bigger. So what are they doing different other than, you know?
Thinking of... They reinvested themselves.
Yeah, they did, and that's kinda where it's at.
This gentleman, Marcus, yes, sir?
Our building downtown looks like...
I, I don't know. I, visually and looking at some of them, they all don't look in great shape to me. They really don't. Is that fair to say? And I think we need somebody smarter than some of us to go in and say, whoever's qualified, there's people that are qualified, he may be that person, or he may be, go ahead and say, "This business, the building's good or bad, it's walls, roof, floor." Right. Plumbing, electrical, things of that nature, I don't know that answer. Maybe that's why they're... What's that? Yep. Bring it back, yep. Yes, sir. What else? One last question, I gotta run. Yes, sir? So, uh, I think from, I think from my perspective, you know, this has been a long day and I really need to sit down and kind of map out with them what, what I think the process should be. But, it really has to have, best way I would say is, it has to start with what the finished product looks like, and a timeline's gonna be built backwards. And I'm cheating a little bit by wanting to see some effort by cleaning up the garbage and taking the crap off the doors and washing the windows and seeing the community come together. And let's just see this weekend if people even wanna even, I mean, if nobody shows up, yeah, sure, tonight. But Saturday, nobody may show up. I don't even know all the property owners, and do we have the keys to all the buildings? And what if we can't get ahold of people that we don't have the keys for, right? So I think there is some work to be done, but I think it would be good just to get together and start that discussion. And then I think Tim and I have some work to do to kind of lay out. If the end goal is to have thirty-four storefronts that all have functional businesses, how much money do we think it's gonna take, what's the zone look like? What I don't wanna do is run it like a government process, and that's not disrespectful to them, but that just sounds like a long time. Just sounds like a long time. Pressure wash things, get them cleaned up, get the storefronts empty, maybe get the business owners together, maybe the next step. The building owners, getting the building owners together may be the next best meeting. How many people are building owners? On that street? Okay, so... Yes, sir? Right. Perfect.
How do you propose for the commission to raise enough money to buy the buildings that need roofs and walls and, you're talking, it'll be a million or more to just get back to check?
And forgive me for being a sparty tent, but they figured out how to raise three and a half million to dredge a lake.
They're the, they're the third highest mill levy of the cities in the state of Kansas. Can we afford to raise a mill levy more? What would it be if we raised it to spend a million on downtown?
Hopefully we take that out of cash.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna lie to you.
You have the cash, you have the grand...
I asked him, the first question I asked him when I got to the card today is, "How much cash do you have in the bank?" Do they know?
How much was it?
Do they, are they allowed to know? Four million dollars? Huh?
Haven't addressed it yet.
Pool's gotta get fixed. I, Tim texted me today that it breaks his heart that the pool's not fixed. He told me he's gonna figure it out one way or the other.
You gotta figure it out. You lose it, you just lost another service for your community.
Well, I don't want a bunch of kids running around the streets. Somebody needs to have a place to take their kids so they can go to park and do the thing. Y'all should make a list of what the priorities are. The pools are a priority, the ball fields are a priority, giving kids something to do. Are you surprised there's four million in the cash in the bank?
Yes, we are, yeah.
I was too, I was, I was kinda happy, I was like, "All right, let's keep this round going."
Marcus?
Yes, sir?
The gentleman talking about the mill levy, uh, a mill in Horton generates just a little over three thousand dollars. Six thousand dollars, I'm sorry. A mill in Hiawatha generates many times that because of the property values that are there. So yes, we have a high mill levy, but it only generates a little amount of money.
He asked if people were surprised at four million in the bank, and, and I, I don't know how much anybody thinks it costs around the city for a year, but, uh, we'd probably get those figures. We have four million in the bank because it wasn't too long ago that we actually bailed a tri-county manor out. Those are why we have five, four million dollars in the bank, because you never know what's gonna happen in a town. We, we could've paid for the sewer project with cash. Do we wanna have no money in the bank? So, we, we couldn't have done the sewer project if we didn't have four million in the bank. They wouldn't have gave us the money to do it. We have to adjust those rates on our sewer to pay for the sewer project. That's part of the project. Those funds are generated by that. I don't even know what that, what's this thing? We, we have to have some kind of control of it, I, I can't... We can spend all four million of that downtown tomorrow.
Well, we don't need to, that's not...
But we don't need to. And, and the pool meeting is next week. It's an open meeting, come to it.
Bet your people show up without me.
Please, we need you to come.
One more, I really gotta go, I gotta, yes, sir?
As a past commissioner and stuff to the city and stuff, I'm all for fixing up the downtown area and stuff like that, and more or less on the buildings that are empty. Now, I'm all for coming in here and fixing, taking over some business that's doing real good and stuff like that, and taking their business away from them or whatever, is what I do think.
And who, who is for that, by the way? Who's for taking over someone's business?
Well, you, you say in buying the buildings and buildings and stuff like that.
No, sir, but it was never about the business, it was about the, the actual building.
Okay, well, the buil-, well, it'd be the buildings and the business and stuff. But my main point is here, I don't think it, before they go buying these buildings or whatever and doing this, I don't think it should be up to the commissioners or a committee that they appoint. If it's gonna be something that's serious, I think it's probably oughta be something that's on a ballot and voted for.
I think a plan should be on a ballot. Have you ever done a special referendum or anything? Yes?
Lake project.
The lake project, the same way the lake project got approved. I'm, I'm coming to the meeting, by the way. But nobody's, just to be clear, nobody's advocating being involved in anybody's business. We'll screw their business up.
Yeah, but that lake wasn't built just for recreational purposes.
The lake was a mistake. I'll argue with you guys until we can go home. You should not have put three and a half million dollars in a lake that you don't own the land around. I understand the water supply issue. How many times have you had to use it?
Instead of we have to though.
How many times have you had to use it? And then, and now you have a three and a half million dollar lake, and if the town closes and people keep leaving, you'll have all the water you want. Nobody will be here to drink it. So we can have a business discussion or we can have a political discussion, but I can tell you that I will not change my position, that was a mistake. Because there's other issues that, that, that I've seen in a day where the sewer system isn't right. Or the pool isn't right, or the downtown looks abandoned. And not everybody's gonna like the list of priorities. And you gotta fight for them, you gotta put them on a ballot, get them in front of everybody, and people say yes or no. But you better know what you're saying yes to and you better know what you're saying no to. Because it's easy for me to say these things, "I don't live here," I can be objective.
I have a business here too, but I don't live here either. So ballot is not gonna do my business much good.
Why?
Why what?
Why isn't a ballot gonna do your business much good?
I don't live here.
Do you don't think you can, you don't think you can influence people that do busi-, that you do business with?
Probably not my business.
What kind of business do you have?
Photography.
You don't think that you can influence customers of yours?
A lot of my business doesn't have that. On desk, something like that, it's a lot, for adding. But the majority of its owners that do not live in cities, they're not...
Well, this, people that do, that live within city limits have to decide what they want their city to become or not become. But this is, we're truly at a fork in the road. So that's, it's easy for me to say because I, I don't worry about hurting anybody's feelings. We're at a, we're at a fork in the road.
What if, what if instead of us owning the building, we pay for the expenses and they just pay it back in the same principle as far as, um, as they generate revenue, they pay us a percent back to pay back the cost of doing that? I mean, in that, in that way, they still have the ownership of the building, but they can pay us back and, and, and is it something that, even on a city behalf, if we're just paying it back into our cash flow, we wouldn't even have to ask for an additional percent?
What if they can't pay it back?
And that's, that's what I'm asking, is it...
What if they can't pay it back? Do you have a, are you doing a loan with them? And if you are, what's your security, what's your collateral for the loan?
But the collateral will be if they can't pay it, then the building would be ours.
So you're basically, so you're basically in the business of providing mortgages?
Just a question.
Yeah, it's, uh...
But they, they definitely don't, they apparently don't want us to own the building either.
Well, there's a few people that don't, and I think that, you know, there's probably people in here that'd be glad to sell the building.
You mentioned earlier about, uh, people being afraid of change. So if a committee was appointed, let's say we, we moved forward and a committee was appointed to come up with a vision for downtown. And that vision was going to draw people in, I would be, personally, I would be fearful that maybe we would come up with the correct vision. So my question to you is, do you have resources that could come in and help that committee with those decisions?
I mean, we can bring city planning people in from all over the country. What, what I would be worried about doing is having somebody that doesn't know the town, that doesn't know the charter, that doesn't know the history, that doesn't know the residents, that doesn't know the businesses, telling you what should be done here. There's plenty of people that can come in and give you advice, but I would definitely want that final plan to come from people from here because you, who knows the place better than you do? Nobody. I don't know it. I'd like to help facilitate it, ask the right questions, challenge you, get the right feedback, but at the end of the day, you live here, this is your town.
At the same time though, the businesses downtown have been unable to do what you're suggesting that we now do. And so, can we do that on our own? I, I question whether we can.
I would say that the, the businesses have been unable to do it in the past because the city and the town did not have a singular focus in the financial resources of the town and the assets and resources of other people to bring it together, and didn't think about that idea. I think if you had had this idea, you would have executed it, because this town seems like a town of survivors. So it, it didn't happen before because maybe we didn't look at it that way, it was looked at differently. And maybe it's a stupid idea. But I don't wanna come visit the town two years from now if nothing happens. You guys are really, and I'll leave you with this. You guys are really, you have a fork at the road moment. This is a tipping point. And you have the opportunity to totally change the way people think about small towns in America. So I'm spending my money and my time to change the way people think about small business in this country. That is the only reason I did the show, the only reason, that's the reason I picked that network. Is I wanted people to think about business differently. I wanted them to think that their small business could actually make money and survive if they followed a plan and they had a process. So this, this movement that you guys are gonna hopefully make, with my help and with their help and with outsiders' help is, can we... can we change the way people think about dying small towns in this country? And rather than having somebody come in town and throw a bunch of money at it, can we figure it out ourself so that other small towns can look at it and believe and have faith that it's possible? So what you guys are about to do isn't just painting the buildings and negotiating us that, it's, I cannot stress this enough. It is truly revolutionary if you get ahold of it. Because there are one of thousands of towns that are about to go out of business. I truly believe in it, I wouldn't have come here and spent the day. I truly believe in it. And I like the fact that it's in Kansas because it's the middle of the country. It doesn't get any better.
How do you plan on helping facilitation? And how often?
Meeting everybody we have. Look, I can't do the work, but I wanna help kind of keep everybody on task. I wanna use whatever resources I have to draw attention to it because I know that I can get people to come here and do stuff for free. And then I've contributed a hundred and fifty thousand with my own money. So I'm putting my money where my mouth is. And, and I'm gonna keep everybody on task. But I said from the beginning, if people aren't committed to it, and I can't be committed to it. I think it'd be really cool to be able to tell people that we literally brought a town back to life on the verge of death. It would be cool for some of these young people that are in high school to say, "Holy crap, it is possible. It took everybody to come together." It's, it's, I just, I'm, I'm totally psyched about it.
Well, we thank you, but I still think it's gonna take somebody like you to keep people prepared tonight.
I will. I will because I'll, I'll, I'll use the media as a forum to praise or the opposite. Marcus?
I know this is gonna come a question that I'm gonna get tomorrow because you've, you've just said you'll put a hundred and fifty thousand of your own money out on the table. And when I, when I walk into the store in the morning, I guarantee you, somebody, fifteen, twenty people throughout the day, and I know the question you guys are gonna ask me is, "What's this guy won out of this? What did he tell you afterwards?" Answer that question, Tim.
I'll answer that, I'll just answer it now. What do I want out? Well, I was born in an orphanage in Beirut, Lebanon. I was adopted by an American family, I'm an only child, you should be able to tell by now. I don't have a lot of friends, I'm not married, I don't have kids. I have six thousand employees. I've been very, very blessed in my life, I made a lot of money. I don't think I can ask for much more. And for me, it's not, I don't want everybody to take this the wrong way, it's not really just about Horton. It's can we prove us together that we can take something that's dying and revive it? I put money in people's businesses all the time. Ninety percent of them really, really go after it, ten percent of them take advantage and blow it. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money to me, I wanna be very clear. But I don't, I tell people when I invest in their business, I, I'm not a consultant, I'm not an advisor, I don't, I don't do that. If I'm gonna tell you what to do, I have to put my own money on the line and, and do it the same. And I didn't feel like it would be genuine for me, I didn't feel like it would be genuine for me to ask you guys to do all those things and not participate. I just didn't feel like it was. And a hundred and fifty thousand's a lot of money and, you know, my mother passed away like a year ago and I'll tell you this quick story because I do have to go. She came to my house like six or seven years ago and she walked in my house, I thought she was gonna be excited, and she smacked me across the face. And, where is this? Yeah, so, my mom said that she was very disappointed in me. And I said, "Are you kidding me? I got a beautiful house, I have five cars, look at all my stuff." And she said, "No, who cares? Who cares? You look like a total jackass." And she was dead serious. And she said, "I'm embarrassed, I totally failed. I totally failed. You, you have the money to buy all these things, great job. Now what? Now what are you gonna do?" She was, "The next time I come here, I don't wanna see any of this stuff." You're gonna have a car. You only have one, but how many cars are you gonna ride? And you don't need a car like that because you look like a dork. What are you doing?" And so I got to keep my house. But the reality of it was, the reality of it was, is that her point was, you gotta do something different, you have to do something bigger. And if you do, karma will take care of the rest. It's a very funny thing, karma's a very funny thing. When I was young and I started making money, I didn't really get it, you know? I was making really good money really early, twenty-five years old, I was making a million dollars a year. And I thought, you know, I'll buy whatever I want, but I was still alone. And so, for people that make good money and don't do something with it, it's just a waste. It's a waste. And I watch very wealthy people who I'm friends with donate money in foreign countries and they go do all these other things and I admire them for it. But I'm a guy that came from another country. And this country gave me a chance to move here. It didn't have to accept me. It didn't have to let me come in. So I kinda, kinda pay it back. I never paid for my admission ticket. So I don't really want anything out of it. Other than I'll be terribly disappointed and terribly bummed if we try to put a plan together and we don't execute. And so, all I ask, what I do want from it, is I want people to be committed to it and people to be passionate and people to care about it. And people to believe that it's the right thing to do. And then we can tell the story to other small towns because Tim can go to a small town or you can go to a small town and say, "It happened in my town, we did it. It was not, it was not fake, it really happened." My kids now have a town. So that's what I want. I don't know what the process is, but my social team here, raise your hand ladies, should use social media to tell the story. You should have a Town of Horton Facebook page, I don't know if y'all have it or not. But you should start one. And you should tell the story. And you should get the media excited about what you're doing. And you should put pictures up all the time and update people on the progress and communicate what's happening. And get out and tell that story. You should get out and tell everybody if you can about what you're trying to do. Call the governor's office, call whoever, call your congressman, call whoever you gotta call. Because you're gonna need the help. We're gonna need the help. Okay? So I'm gonna take my candy. My awesome basket, I'm driving to St. Joe's. I haven't been home in fourteen days. And I hope to be back, you know, maybe in the next three, four weeks. An easy place for me to come through. But I will not come back if you guys don't push the ball forward.
What does the community wanna do? We wanna get involved?
Thank you very much, I have to run, I'm sorry, I'm gonna dash out of here.